Hello, everyone, and welcome to another Decaturish.com election debate. I am your host, editor and publisher, Dan Wisant Hunt. Got another great debate for you tonight. The candidates are for the District Five DeKalb County Board of Education seat. There are four candidates in the race. You will notice that there are two here. Our policy at Decaturish is we set up the forum. We tell you when it's going to be. We roll with whoever shows up. So that's what we're doing here. If other candidates show up, they're welcome to join in and participate, but we're going to keep it moving. So the candidates in the race are Donna Priest-Brown, Manus Caldwell, Talisa Ammons, and Tiffany Tate-Hogan. The candidates we have here today are Donna Priest-Brown. Donna, how are you?
How are you today, Dan?
Great, thank you for asking. And Tiffany Tate-Hogan, how are you?
Just fine, thank you. Thanks for having me.
Thank you both so much for joining us. Thank you both for running for the school boards. Education is such an important part of DeKalb County, our community, any community. I'm a DeKalb County Schools parent myself, proud to be so. And this is just a very important discussion that we're going to have tonight. And so I appreciate everybody who showed up for it. Appreciate everybody watching. If you're following us on Twitch, you can sign up for a Twitch account and ask questions. And I'll ask questions to the candidates that you ask in Twitch. So the way it's going to work is each candidate is going to get a two-minute opening statement and a two-minute closing statement. They're going to get two minutes to answer each question, and we're going to try to alternate who does what. So who answers and who finishes and that sort of thing. So with that out of the way, we're going to start our opening statements, and we're going to start them with Donna. You have two minutes.
Thanks for that, Dan. Good evening, Decaturish members, Dan, candidates and community members. I thank you for having this important forum this evening for the Board of Ed members. I stand before you today humbled by the opportunity to share with you my extensive community accomplishments and professional background. Throughout my years of service, I have deeply committed to education, empowerment, and community engagement. From my leadership roles within the Boy Scouts of America to my involvement with parent councils and educational associations, I have worked tirelessly to uplift and empower individuals within our community. My dedication to education and empowerment extends beyond local initiatives, as evidenced by my participation in the prestigious programs such as the Public Education Leadership Program, also known as PELP, at Harvard University. Furthermore, my professional background in sales, marketing, finance, and management at AT&amp;T has equipped me with the valuable skills and insights that I believe will be instrumental in addressing the challenges facing our community and education system. With a solid foundation in economics, information systems, and accounting, coupled with hands-on experience managing multi-billion dollar portfolios, I am prepared to navigate complex financial landscapes and drive positive change. As I share my journey and experiences with you today, I hope to convey not only my passion for community service and education, but also my unwavering commitment to fostering collaboration and meaningful progress in our shared endeavors. Thank you for your attention, and I look forward to our discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Tiffany, you have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Tate-Hogan, and I am running for District Five School Board. Thank you to Decaturish. Thank you, Dan, for having me this evening and inviting me to share my views on education and contribute to the discussion that we're going to have. Just a little bit of information about me. I am a longtime resident of South DeKalb. I actually live currently in the same community in which I grew up. I am a product of DeKalb County Schools. I am a former teacher in DeKalb County. I am an educator of 29 years, and I'm rapidly approaching retirement. And I have done, helped various positions within K-12 settings, teacher, administrator, central office personnel. And I have worked with at several school districts, and I have coached leaders of several different school districts as well. And so I think with my background in education, I bring a different vantage point because I understand the internal, intimately understand the internal workings of a school district. And I would love to share my expertise on the school board. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. So for those watching at home, when I put up my church finger, that means the candidates have 30 seconds left to make their statements. It's our sophisticated timekeeping system at Decaturish. Just wanted you to know that it's not code or anything. So let's start this question with Tiffany. Now Tiffany, the incumbent in this race, Vicky Turner, is not running again. So it's an open seat. But I want to know, you have two minutes. What is your opinion of Vicky Turner and the job that she's done as a school board member? Two minutes.
Well, well, Ms. Turner, I will say this, that I have, I've spoken to Ms. Turner. And so I have, you know, and even I usually go participate in the, or not participate. I usually attend the community for community input meetings. And so I've met her, I've spoken with her. And so personally, she's a lovely person. I don't want to place-
I'm sorry. Please continue.
Okay, okay. I don't want to place any judgment on someone. But I think that the decisions, you know, that were made, I don't know why the decisions were made. Some decisions, I may not have made the same decisions. I don't know because I was not in that particular situation. So I hate to say and say, oh, no, they did a wrong job because I don't like to place judgment on something that I'm not actually in that place at that moment in time, actually, in the situation. So I don't know the reasons for the decisions that were made. So I'm not going to place judgment, but, and I'll leave it there.
Thank you. So Talessa, and I apologize if I'm pronouncing that wrong. Ammons has joined us. If you would, please turn on your camera and please turn off any media that you might be playing right now because we can hear that on our end.
I'm actually at a forum in person. I stepped out.
Oh, okay. Well, I apologize for you having to do double duty there. We'll try to work that in the best as we can. So Donna, you have two minutes to answer the same question, which is what is your opinion of the current incumbent, Vicky Turner?
Okay, I've known Vicky since she, you know, first running for a school board back in 2014 or 15. And I have partnered with Vicky with my various organizations, South DeKalb Parent Council, South DeKalb Improvement Association Education, Inc. We worked in the community on various projects. We had several meetings in terms of meeting with the superintendent. So I have a friendship with Vicky, Ms. Turner. And I've also worked alongside her husband on the Stonecrest Splosh Advisory Committee in Stonecrest. I'm going to just piggyback off of Tiffany. You know, in terms of decision-making, if you're not in a room to know all the details behind why people make decisions, you know, and why they, you know, make certain decisions, I can't say 100% sure what I would have. I know what I would have done, but again, I don't have the big picture. I don't have all the information to put blame on anyone. So I am not going to make place judgment on any decisions in terms of the school board members.
Thank you. Talessa, how do you pronounce your first name? I'm so sorry, is it Talisa or Trelesse? And you're-
It's Talisa.
Talisa. Talisa, the question to our candidates is what is your opinion of the current incumbent who is not running again, Vicky Turner? You have two minutes.
As a parent, I have been trying to get in contact with Ms. Turner for about a year. And I only met her recently at the Miller Grove Cluster Meeting, which took place in February. So I find that appalling that it takes so long to get in contact with your district leader. Um, so I don't know her. But I was trying to get in contact with her, and I could not get ahold of her. I did speak with her daughter, who is also entitled one. But again, it was hard to get in contact with anyone in District Five.
Okay. So Talisa, we'll start the next question off with you. This week is a pretty stressful week for parents in DeKalb County Schools. I'm a DeKalb County Schools parent. And because there's milestones testing, there's standardized testing that's going on this week. So Talisa, starting with you, you have two minutes. What is your opinion about standardized testing? And what can be done to make this a less stressful experience for students and their families?
Okay, thank you. So I'm actually going to give you a real-life experience. Today, when I picked up my third grader from school, her teacher informed me that she went to sleep on the milestone test. I really, I really think the test cannot judge a sleeping child. So she might not do well on it. I don't think that standardized testing can measure intelligence, but it is helpful. I'm sorry, did you say how to reduce the stress of testing?
Yeah, how would you reduce the stress and anxiety surround testing in DeKalb County Schools? Or what are your ideas?
Not be weighed so heavily upon testing. It could be used as a tool, but not as a measurement to retain students. It can guide you to help them get, I'm sorry. It can help you know where they are as far as their abilities or inabilities, but it should not be so heavily weighed.
Okay, thank you. Donna, the same question is to you. What is your opinion of standardized testing? And what are your ideas to make that a less stressful experience for students and their families? You have two minutes. You're on mute, Donna.
Sorry about that. Thank you for that question. Great question. Standardized testing is needed. But I don't think it should be the primary source in terms of performance and achievement for students. In regards to preparation, I would start early with preparation, you know, preparing for standardized testing. I know in the school, you know, I have two sons who graduated from DeKalb County School District. And I always felt that, you know, along with, you know, extracurricular activity, coursework, and, you know, family responsibilities, even jobs, you know, students who have jobs, they need a balance. They need a balance in terms of how do they balance those things, right? So my opinion and my recommendation would be to start the process, you know, August, you know, the first few months of the school year. That's, you know, one of my recommendations. And also rest and proper rest and diet is very, very important. And also in terms of the parents, you know, would be good to have the parents help as well. So, you know, the student, you know, getting better prepared, the parent, you know, supervising, managing that process, and the school district organizing in a better way in terms of getting it done, starting the process early than sooner than later. Those are my opinions.
Donna, same question, two minutes.
Tiffany?
Tiffany, I'm so sorry.
Okay, so first of all, disclaimer, I am a test coordinator or assessment coordinator for a district, a local school district. And I've been doing this for about seven years and probably longer than that as a building-level administrator in terms, I was a test coordinator as well. And so with testing, I completely understand the angst that comes with it, especially for students who are third-grade students who are new to state testing. It can be a bit much. And I think it actually goes back more so to the culture that's created within the school itself. It's really important that you create a school, school leaders create a culture where students understand that the purpose of the test and not focus so much on the outcome as far as what's actually going to happen because it's only one data point. In some school districts that use it for promotion retention purposes because of the fact that they're required to, they just need to understand that this is just one snapshot of what you've been doing all year. And what I used to tell students, we always used to have fun with it as a building-level administrator, but we just have to make sure that we are lowering the anxiety. And I tell students, you know, you've been doing the work all along. We just need to see what you've been doing. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Tiffany, we'll start this next question with you. What do you think, do you think DeKalb County Schools is doing enough to support the mental health of students and staff? And what would you like to see the district add in terms of support?
That's a great question. I don't think, from what I can see, and this is with any school district. I've been looking at different school districts as well. No one is doing enough in terms of mental health for teachers, students, other staff members since, you know, since the pandemic. It really, we really have to focus on offering additional services, making sure that we have school psychologists, making sure that we have really, first of all, getting school psychologists into programs so that they can become a certified school psychologist. In addition to looking at different avenues, maybe some online therapy sessions that could be offered to students, that are available to students not only at school, but also at home. In addition to additional counselors. There are a variety of things. I know DeKalb County is doing, they have the Zen Rooms that they're currently doing. But we have to find some type of outlet for our teachers, our students to work on their mental health, well, mental wellness. But definitely, I think it starts with additional staff and therapeutic services or therapy services for those students who really may need that extra level of support. And it's all about supporting our students and staff members in their mental well-being. So I would definitely support any type of budget that prioritizes mental wellness.
Talisa, same question for you. Do you think the school district is doing enough to support students and staff when it comes to mental health? And what do you want to see the district add in terms of mental health support?
No, the district is not doing enough for mental health for the students or staff, for all the employees. I think they should pay more. The national, I think it says $90,000. You should make at least $90,000 to live comfortably in America. And I don't know if the teachers are making anywhere as near as that. So I think that will probably help with mental health. Also exercise. My, I like nurture and nature. So I like bringing in the environment, going into the environment. The classroom is stuffy. The teachers and students need fresh air. So I have already started doing a garden at my local school to get the kids out of the classroom and to get into nature. Also, it's, we don't have a sense of community inside of the schools. I feel like the parents are often left out of conversations. And so it's not, it's not a great space to be in. So creating wellness all around, pay more, be understanding, get exercise, and just be a community because school is, it should be a community. That's one minute.
That's 30 seconds. Sorry, you were here when we did the, yeah, it just means you got 30 seconds left on two minutes.
Okay, I'm done.
Oh, no worries. Donna, the same question to you, two minutes.
Yes, again, another great, great question. You know, growing up in my family, we dealt with mental health issues, relatives in the family. And what I found oftentimes is a taboo in certain communities in terms of addressing mental health. And oftentimes, many students are in, adults go undiagnosed for very, very, very many years because people get pushback and resistance to getting help. But where I would start is I do something called Mornings with Donna. And I had a, my first session a week ago, and I had a teacher join the conversation. And she shared with me the social emotional learning for students. And I get it, you know, and I'm going to start there. I'm going to start there with that, with that data point. So, you know, students, you know, come into a classroom, and I know that's a lot to put on a teacher to, you know, identify students and who, you know, to see who has a problem, whatever. But it's good to check in with students and say, you know, spend a time, you know, even before an instruction period, to spend time, you know, five minutes, how are you today? How was, you know, how did you spend your evening last night? You know, I think that's one way. Secondly, the school district is not doing enough of mental health. I know the Zindens are in, Stonecrest, where I live, there's 12 schools have the Zindens in the schools. I think more dollars are needed in the budget for mental health. And again, oftentimes we focus on the students, but we have to also focus on faculty, faculty members. And I mean, when I say faculty, I mean from food services to bus services to, you know, psychologists to counselors, everyone. Everyone in that schoolhouse has to be mentally healthy.
Thank you. Donna, the next question, we're going to start with you. Currently, DeKalb County Schools is developing its five-year strategic plan. What would, what role do you think the strategic plan should have in guiding district operations? And how will you work to see it implemented?
Okay, so I'm privileged to say, I'm happy to say, rather, I was a part of the strategic plan back in 2015 when Mr. Thurman was a part of, was our superintendent. I was on the committee. And I would say, and oftentimes, you know, he would always say that, and a lot of people say this, people create strategic plans and they sit on a shelf for many years and collect dust. And there's no real active activity or, you know, it doesn't make it active or, you know, a working tool. Okay. I am a big process person and quality person. And I believe when you have, you know, even policies and procedures, when you have guidelines or processes that you follow, it guides you, it keeps you on track. In terms of operational guidelines, I mean, I would use that profusely, the strategic plan. So this way you could meet objectives, objectives and goals for the school district. So I'm a big believer in process, strategic planning is a process. So I will definitely, you know, I will encourage my peers to make sure that we follow the strategic plan.
Thank you. Tiffany, same question to you.
The strategic plan, of course, is a guiding document for the school system to use. It's for five years. Most schools, schools are actually, they do a school improvement plan usually yearly. But this document, kind of agreeing with what Donna says, is that it has to be used. It's a guide. And so we first, when we're developing, I've sat on, or I've been a part of a strategic plan for a school district, looking at the data. And so first, you always have to start with the data and let that data help you to frame your, your goals for your plan and setting up those priorities that you need in term, in addition to your strategic priorities, in addition to that, to that, the strategy that you are going to use to make sure that this document is not just a document that sits on the shelf. And as board members, it would be very important for you to continuously to look at this plan and make sure that you're monitoring for progress and you are updating, you know, and talking to your constituents about how you're making progress on this strategic plan. So we just don't need to have it not being used. And we come around every five years and dust it off and say, oh, it's now time for us to update it. So it's really important that it's an active, working document.
Thank you. Talisa, same question.
Um, the data shows the same thing every year. The school systems have been failing for a long time. I think we need to come up with something else. Um, I don't know. This, this planning and actually implementing are two different things. And I think DeKalb County has a problem with implementing their policy. So even though they have the plan, will they be implementing them? And if they don't, will there be some accountability if they do not? And that's all. You got to use the plan.
Shorter answers are always fine. It just lets us get to more questions, so that's great. Tiffany, we're going to start this next question with you. DeKalb Schools currently has a backlog of maintenance projects. As a board member, how will you work with the district to move these projects forward? Two minutes.
Yes, yes, I'm very aware of that. So I definitely think, believe that working closely with the superintendent and letting the superintendent, number one, know our expectations as a board of what we expect in terms of these projects and making sure that, that we don't have a backlog. So there needs to be a plan in place where we are monitoring for progress. We're listed, we have a list and constantly updated in addition to the public, where there's a presentation monthly being made from their facilities manager discussing the projects and the, excuse me, the progress that's actually being made on it. So that needs to be- So that needs to be a serious, um, conversation in terms of what our expectation is as a board. And then that, uh, message, that expectation needs to be, um, um, presented to the superintendents designate over, um, these projects. And we have to measure for, um, monitor for progress and making sure that we've created a timeline and these projects are getting done expeditiously. And it need, and we need have to keep the public informed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Talisa, same question to you on maintenance projects.
Okay, so I am working with Mr. Waters. How you doing guys? He is the ma- the chief of maintenance. And I call him personally, I send pictures. And for me, at the, at my home school, I'm, I'm, I'm doing double duty. I'm doing a form. Okay, okay. I'm sorry. But I work with Mr. Waters and he has been efficient in doing everything that I have asked him to do. He's now working on a paving project for Stoneview. He's going to get back with me with, um, Salem Middle School. So all you have to do is personally call these people. I, I don't like the middle man getting in touch. No, go directly to the person who is in control of that sector. That's all. But yes, he's doing, um, he's doing amazing. His name is Mr. Waters. He is the, um, chief of operations for DeKalb County in my district. So I just called him personally. He has come through with everything I have asked for, for at least four schools in this district.
Well, if he's interested in some side work, I've got things that I need done around the house. Um, they should connect us. Uh, it's, 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 it's hard to find people. I'm not a handy person. So, um, he definitely could use the help. Uh, Donna, question, question to you.
Yes, repeat it one last time.
Sure. Uh, DeKalb County's got a bunch of maintenance work, hasn't been done. If you're elected, uh, what we do as a board member to, to help move that work forward?
I would recommend that we hire a project manager, project manager. And, um, and I'm, I'm assuming that this information now is being kept in a database. So this is how you're ma- uh, monitoring and managing the process. Um, so that, that's number one, hire a, a, um, a project manager. The information is kept in a database, in a central database where everyone has access to it, the information. So like Tiffany mentioned, you know, quarterly, monthly, someone is monitoring this. So you're looking at, you know, all the, you know, you're looking at the, the, the scope of the project. What is the project? Where is the project? Cost of the project, when the project starts, when the project's, when the project end, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, that is very important because I find what I'm really surprised by with, you know, systems, you know, and organizations, um, that they don't have a project manager or they may not keep all, everything in one, one central database. And so I think that's how you manage costs, making sure that all the projects, this, you talked about a backlog is getting done in appropriate time. And also, you know, share that out with the school district and, um, also stakeholders, you know, who have problems in their schoolhouses. So, and it's, and kept in a central place too, on a website where we can go look at that information.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Talisa, uh, we're gonna start this question with you. What do you think is Superintendent Devon Horton's biggest accomplishment since becoming superintendent? And what do you think, where is an area where you think he needs to improve? You have two minutes.
I'm just gonna be honest.
Please.
I think, I think the board time and its effectiveness is not where it can be, but hopefully working together to come to some form of agreement can push things along more smoothly and quicker. Um, because I'm a parent right now and educator. I want to be a part of the board meetings, but they are long-winded. Um, it could be almost five hours for a board meeting sometimes when I feel like the issue could be settling the hour to. So he's a great guy and I love what I'm seeing. But I think we could do a little bit better and get the job done in a timely manner. Just like those projects, we wanna get, you know, move things along.
Okay, Donna, same question to you. Uh, Superintendent Devon Horton. What do you like about what he's doing? What do you think he's accomplished? And where do you think he needs to improve?
Okay, um, I like thus far what Dr. Horton is doing. I met him back in, in August of twenty twenty-three. My organization, South DeKalb Improvement Association, we had a, a superintendent meet and greet in Stonecrest. And I was amazed by his photo, you know, his memory. He, he didn't have staff. And in my community work that I, that I do, we usually have, uh, superintendent meet and greets at the beginning of a school year, and they usually bring all of their staff. And not that I have a problem with staff, but he was able to share with the audience. And he had only been there for a, a month. And I understand even prior to that, he had been researching the school district, you know. And so he, he had a lot of information on the school. So he had a lot of background on the school. Um, I am impressed with his miracles framework that they're rolling out. Um, I think he's done a lot in a short period of time. Um, I'm also pleased with the seven, the twelve point nine million dollar investment um, in terms of putting more resources in the schoolhouses. Uh, and again, considering he's only been in the school district for nine months, um, there's always like, uh, Talisa said, there's always, you know, room for improvement. Um, but, you know, thus far, I, I, um, he may need to slow down just a tad bit because he's doing a lot. He is doing a lot, you know. In fact, I saw him yesterday at the Lightonia Chamber meeting. He came and gave us, um, some words and updates on the school district. Um, and he also, you know, he's meeting with grassroots organizations, which are the pulse and the ears of the community. Um, you know, in terms of what's going on in the communities, because oftentimes we don't hear from the silent majority, right? We don't hear from them. So oftentimes they're, they feel comfortable going to civic organizations or grassroots organizations to share their concerns. So I am pleased thus far with Dr. Horton.
Thank you. Uh, Tiffany, same question.
Um, so yes, I think he's, um, so far, um, I, I've been pretty impressed. And I know when they first bought him on, um, the school board first bought him on, um, I did attend several town hall meetings. Um, and just, um, I was impressed by how he handled the crowd, um, how he responded to people. He has a very calm, um, demeanor. Um, very, um, very knowledgeable on quite a few topics. And, um, I was extremely impressed, um, how he communicated. I'm, I'm still impressed with, um, the communication piece. I subscribe to the, um, the newsletter that he sends out weekly and, um, as a community member and, um, is filled with information and keeping the community informed. So I think that's, he's doing an excellent job there. I know he's been out of the, the community. I've seen him, um, at a church before, um, and just engaging with the community, which, which is extremely important. And so I think he, um, just needs to continue to work on, um, continually, continuously building the relationships and partnerships, um, with, um, community members. And I've, um, spoken to different people within the, within the district and they, they're, they're impressed as well and saying that he is very focused and he's making very strategic decisions, um, for, in order to move the school district forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna, we're gonna start this next question with you. Uh, how can the board work more effectively with the superintendent to accomplish its goals?
Okay, so great question, Dan. So because, uh, Dr. Uh, Horton is a new superintendent, we need, in, in any job, you need to give people room to grow into, you know, um, to find their way, okay? Um, and then, you know, after twenty-four months, thirty-six months, you, you evaluate because that's what we do, right? In terms of super, uh, uh, school board members, we, uh, we evaluate the superintendent. Um, I think right now, like, you know, the Tiffany stated, he's doing a fabulous job. And, you know, in terms of communication, he's communicating, um, he's out in the community, you know, he's out in churches, out at games, you know, uh, athletic games, baseball, football, so forth and so on. Um, I just feel it, you know, me, uh, as a school board member, just giving him his space, um, um, to do what he does best. He's experienced, um, and, you know, he's worked at, you know, he's worked outside of, you know, southeast, he's worked in other, you know, northeast, other school districts. So I just say, you know, give him his, you know, space and time. And, and from, and from what I'm seeing and gathering thus far, he's doing a good job.
Thank you. Uh, Tiffany, same question.
Okay, and can you repeat that question?
Absolutely, I can. Yeah, absolutely. Uh, how can the board work more effectively with the superintendent to accomplish its goals?
Um, to work with him more effectively, I think really, I mean, I know that they've set up an evaluation, which of course we are not privy to. Um, but making sure, you know, you still, even though he has an evaluation and the board has their goal, you know, we have our goals that we're working on. But we do need to make sure that we do provide certain parameters in which he stays within. And just provide guidance to him and say, hey, you know, there are certain things that are kind of, um, as, as we call it, um, or in education, some non-negotiables. Um, and in just making sure that he knows, you know, there are parameters that, that, you know, to kind of keep him guiding him in the right direction, um, so that he's not just completely out there, um, on his own. Yes, we have the goals. Yes, he has to handle the data, the day-to-day operations. Um, as board members, you cannot interfere with the day-to-day operations. But we can set parameters and saying, hey, you, you don't need to go out in this direction. Um, kind of, um, we kind of, or guardrails, um, that we can put up just to kind of provide him with some more guidance as to, um, when he's, um, placing, um, handling the day-to-day operations and, um, making sure that we're meeting our goals as a board, as a school district.
Thank you. Talisa, same question.
Um, I think as a whole, we all can work together by being transparent on all levels. While Dr. Horton is a great communicator, I don't know how well he is at receiving communications. So I think everyone needs to have a listening ear to work more effectively. Um, and he, he does need time to prove what he can do since he is new. So give him that time, but also talk to the staff that's being affected by his policies and talk to the parents and the children to see if they're okay with the change that is being made. Now, I am, I receive the newsletters also. But again, he is a great communicator. Do he get back to an email that a parent sent out? Or is he going to, you know, be readily available for incoming comments and conversations? Um, I think all of that is generic and it's done because, but again, we all can work together if we have some type of understanding and transparency about our goals.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so if you're just joining us.
And I'm sorry, I have to leave. They're calling me on to the, and yes.
Oh, do you want to make a quick closing statement before you go, Talisa?
Oh, yes, if I can.
Yeah, go for it.
Oh, okay. My name is Talisa Amis and I'm a parent of four DeKalb County students. Um, and we are coming from Atlanta Public School System. So I was quite shocked to see how DeKalb County School Systems are lacking what we had in APS. And I just want to bring a little bit of that here because I'm coming from a Title I school and that school had did a total. I don't even wanna say it's three sixty, okay? It was three sixty. So I know what Title One wants, can, I, I know what Title One funds can do if allocate, if allocated appropriately. I know what the budget can do if we come together and have a goal and allocate these billions of dollars to the, eh, to, to the enrichment, to enrichment programs, to paying this, the staff, all the staff, the drivers too, because they have third and second load sometimes. So we need to spread the money, spread the funds around and it, I think it is, excuse me. I'm sorry. And I think it will make a, um, a measurable improvement all around as far as testing, um, mental health, retention, teachers will stay, um.
Okay, well, um, thank you. No, thank you so much. I think that's a, that, that it's a good place to stick a pin in it. So, uh, thank you so much for joining us, Talisa. Good luck with the rest of your evening in the other forum. And thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
And if you're just joining us, uh, on Twitch and on Facebook, thisistheDeKalb.com, District Five Board of Education forums. There are four candidates in the race. Talisa was with us for a second, but she got double booked on a forum. So we let her make a statement and she's off to do the other forum. Uh, the candidates who are with us right now are, uh, Donna Priest Brown and Tiffany Tate Hogan. If you appreciate this opportunity that we're providing you today, please go to supportyourlocalednews.com and become a paying supporter of DeKalbish. Free news is not cheap. We do need your support. We've got a freelancer gonna, gonna cover this meeting like a, like a regular story and write about what happened. We got freelancers heading out to forums. We got freelancers asking candidates questions. We got freelancers asking the voters questions on Election Day. We got a lot going on and we need your support to keep that going. So again, supportyourlocalednews.com is the place that you can go and become a paying subscriber today. Please do so. We really need your help. And with that, we're gonna move on to our next question. And I'm gonna, uh, reshuffle the deck in, in terms of, uh, who answers and starts first because I kind of lost track of it. Uh, but we're gonna start, if y'all don't mind, with Donna on this one. And, uh, Donna, my question to you is, the district has seen declining enrollment since COVID and post-COVID. Why, in your opinion, has enrollment declined? And what would you do to convince more families to attend DeKalb County Schools?
Yeah, that's a great question. And that's a question I've raised, uh, to school leaders, um, and Dr. Um, Horton is one of them. Um, because we're, you know, we're now at ninety-two thousand students. Um, my youngest son aged out of the school district back in twenty seventeen and we were at a little over a hundred thousand students. Um, and, and that's concerning because Fulton County, we're right neck and neck with Fulton County. We're both at ninety-two thousand. And I don't want to become the fourth school district. I want to stay hopefully one, one day and, but stay at the three and, and, and the three place there. Um, I, I believe a, a lot of families are finding other options. Homeschool is a big one. Homeschool has increased since COVID. Um, a lot of students are being homeschooled. Uh, private school is another, um, uh, uh, option for families that they've been doing, you know, homeschooling and, um, private schools for many, many years. Um, what I'm finding, you know, on the southeast and southwest side of the DeKalb County, there are a lot of empty seats on the south side and there are not a lot of empty seats in north and central DeKalb. Um, how would I encourage families to come back into the school district? I think just having options, you know, to definitely, you know, practice the, the diversity, uh, equity and inclusion. Um, you know, because all students are different. All, we have a lot of different learning styles of students. So I think giving parents and families options within the public school system will bring students back into the school district. Um, also, you know, hiring, you know, I, you know, more, um, I don't, I don't want to say qualified educators, but in terms of the south end, I could speak for the south end, uh, south end of DeKalb County, just getting better teachers in the schoolhouses in the south end of DeKalb County. And I think we would bring a lot of students back and families back into public school district in DeKalb County.
Thank you. Tiffany, same question.
Okay, so yes, the enrollment is definitely declining and it's probably due to several reasons. Uh, first of all, after the pandemic, Uh, first of all, after the pandemic, I think that's when the decline really started. Um, it was probably on that trajectory earlier, but, uh, there are, the pandemic, we never, kids never came back for whatever reason. Um, there are also, we have aging communities as well, where our, um, the communities, we're not getting that influx of younger families in some of our communities. And therefore, um, that you see a decline in, um, the number of students at the local, um, within our neighborhood schools. And another thing is just, um, performance, low achievement in our neighborhood schools. And I'm going to be honest, you know, no, I, I had a neighbor, uh, across the street. They lived here for five years. Their student, their child was approaching kindergarten age. And they put their house up for scale. I said, why? Why are you leaving? It was a lovely family, two kids, and they said they're moving to Gwinnett County because they looked at the performance level for the kids within our neighborhood, um, our neighborhood school, elementary school, and they said they weren't going to do it. They moved to Gwinnett County and that, you know, I understood that because you're not going to put your child in a school where only, you know, 30% of the kids are reading on grade level. You know, that, that makes no sense. And so in order to grow it, we have to make, get our schools and our kids achieving at the level in which we know that they're capable of. And so, um, that's how we'll increase and bring families, young families back into the community, into the school district.
Thank you. And Tiffany, this, this next question, we're going to start with you. What are your ideas for attracting qualified teachers and staff to work in DeKalb County schools?
Um, that's a great question as well. So a lot of it, it was too faux. Um, you always hear about compensation, which granted, compensation is extremely important. I, I was myself, as a young teacher, I was working several jobs. Um, because I just had a certain style of living that I was accustomed to. However, um, school culture matters as well. School culture that's set by the leadership in the building. And I know this because I was a building level administrator as well. And we lost very few teachers in our school. Um, even though the county wasn't the highest paying, paying county, but because of the fact that the teachers believed in what we were doing at the school and that school culture. School culture matters. So therefore, you know, making sure that we're training our school leaders um, on how to create a culture that's nurturing, nurturing and supportive to our teachers, um, it matters. It makes a difference. And so, yes, we have to do the compensation studies, et cetera, et cetera. But at the end of the day, it doesn't matter how much money. If the school culture is not right and, and teachers are stressed and they feel like they're being bullied and harassed, they're not going to stay. They're going to find another school district that's paying the equal amount of money where they have a better environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna, same question about teacher retention.
Uh, can you repeat the question?
Sure. What are your ideas for attracting qualified teachers and staff to DeKalb County schools?
Um, teachers matter and staff members matter as well. Um, I, I like what the DeKalb County School District is doing now with the teacher residency program with ENITE. I think that's a fabulous genius idea what they're doing and recruiting teachers um, in the plan and how they're laying it out. You know, you do the program and you have to guarantee, you know, five years of employment, you know, with the Cap County School District. Excuse me. Um, professional development is very, very important in that they get to the professional development end. Um, they get the training, you know, the required training that's needed. And I would imagine through HR, this is a system of a, a schedule of training that teachers should make sure they meet the training schedule dates. Um, compensation, you have to be competitive to the neighboring, uh, metro Atlanta school districts. Um, one thing that happens often with teachers is retaliation. And I've heard this throughout the years, you know, teachers feel like they're being silenced. They need to be heard. Um, when they have a particular issue, a concern, they need to be heard by their, um, school leaders. Um, safety, safety is important. Um, I wouldn't do the job if I wasn't, I didn't feel safe. You know, I would look for other, um, job opportunities if I didn't feel safe in a school, in a school community. Also, mental health, mental wellness. Um, they need to take time and the school district needs to, you know, value that time off for, you know, teachers and staff members. And, um, yeah, I, those are the things I would, in terms of retention, definitely consider. And I'm sure there's a, there's a host of other things, but these are like my top five items.
Thank you. So this next question requires a little bit of context, so bear with me. Uh, DeKalb County School Board currently has board level oversight over certain central office hires. The, basically the board has to sign off on it uh, before, uh, superintendent can make some C-suite level hires. Now, don't ask me to cite the policy chapter in verse because I can't, but I know it, there are certain people in upper echelons of the central office that do, uh, require board approval before they can start work in DeKalb County schools. So Donna, starting with you, do you support giving the superintendent the authority to hire more of his central office staff without that extra oversight by the school board?
No. I think soup oversight is needed and required. I think, you know, as a team effort, I, you would, you know, I would recommend having everyone at the table to look at all of the candidates and to decide on all of the candidates and to even interview the candidates as well. Um, because that to me is, you know, it's almost like a monopoly or you controlling, you have total control over the staff and, um, employees that come into the school district. And I think, you know, you would want to, I would want to have oversight as a superintendent, you know, to have my board members involved in that process. So I would say, no.
Thank you. Tiffany, same question to you. You're on me.
Okay, so, okay, so I hope I'm understanding this question correctly. Um, and this just goes to, um, what I know about schooling. And so you're saying that there are certain positions that the board does not have to approve, right?
That the board, the board does, yeah. So most of the positions within the school district are, are done by the superintendent and his, and his staff, most of the hiring. But there are certain, what I call C-suite, C-level, you know, CFO-type employees that require an extra level of approval. So the board has to review. This has come up a lot in recent meetings where, where one board member in particular has had a lot of things to say about, uh, certain central office hires that the board has to approve. And so my question is essentially, do you support giving the superintendent more ability to make those kinds of hires without that extra layer of board oversight?
Okay, so let me first just say my understanding of schooling and what I've experienced throughout my years in education. So, yes, all hires have to go, have to be placed before the board and the board has to approve whatever the hires are. Now, I will say this, when new superintendents are coming in, um, and I've worked probably under at least 15 different superintendents throughout 30 years. And so they always are allowed at least five people that can come in and like their, their team, their cabinet members, the people, or maybe three people. Some have three, some may have up to five, where the board, um, they, they come in and they are hired. And that's because of the fact that, um, no board, or you want people to have someone around them, their own team of people when they're coming into a new situation to, um, to kind of support and be with them, you, because they're in a completely new situation. So I've always seen that out of all the superintendents, you always have at least three people that are going to be automatically approved. Um, because those are the people that you're bringing in as a school superintendent. And so I don't have any issues with that. I've seen it done many a times before and I'm probably misunderstanding the question. Um, but everything has to receive board approval. So I don't, I'm not quite understanding what does not have, um, board approval.
Right. So typically, the way the board, the personnel lists work, the least of the meetings that I've seen, and I've watched a few of them, uh, is there's sort of a broad, you know, entrances and exits report, this is who we hired, this is who left. But in DeKalb schools, there is an actual process for board oversight for certain C-suite level folks. And I, and I don't, I need to have it in front of me, but I don't. But it, but it generally speaking, it's people who are, you know, report directly to Dr. Horton as opposed to people who report to the people who report to people to Dr. Horton. And so the general premise of the question is, do, do you think he should have more autonomy to hire the people who report directly to him?
Well, I think, right. And I think to a certain extent that you have to, you have to be very careful and you don't want to interfere with that day-to-day. I know days, even though this is hiring, day-to-day operations, where you have to allow the superintendent, the autonomy to bring before the board and say, here, uh, these are the people that I want to support me. And then from there, they have the right to either not approve the recommendation or approve the recommendation. But for them to interfere with the act, actual hiring of that person, I do not think that should be done. No.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to the next question, we'll start with you, Tiffany. Um, being a school board member is very time-consuming. Uh, board members often meet multiple times a month. The meetings last all day. The pay, the pay ain't great. Um, how do you plan to balance your responsibilities as a board member with your personal responsibilities? You have two minutes.
Okay. So, um, I don't think I'll have any problems with that. Um, as I get closer and closer to retirement, um, I will probably, um, transition into another job that is probably more flexible, um, have a more flexible schedule. So I don't think that'll be a problem. Even if I continue to work in my current position, um, you know, I, it won't be a problem. I, you know, I can definitely do that, um, that position as well. Um, because I do have, you know, we have days that I can take, um, in those instances. So, um, I don't see that work-life balance balancing uh, my personal life as well as being on the board. I, I don't see that as being a problem. I've always, in education, I've always had, either I was in school or I was probably in school and working jobs. So I think it'll be, it'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna, same question. Balancing your personal life and your, uh, board responsibilities.
I am, I am currently retired for the last three years, um, but you wouldn't know it. But, um, I'm retired. Um, I, I'm involved with a lot of community organizations. So I could see, you know, that wouldn't be an issue for me, uh, work and balance. Um, because I, I'm retired right now, so.
Okay. Well, we, believe it or not, we are at our last question. Um, so I thank you both for participating. We're going to end with this question, then we're going to go into closing statements, uh, starting with Donna. Donna, what are your thoughts on weapons detectors being installed in DeKalb high schools? Do you think they are needed and do you think that they are effective?
Yes, very good question. Great question. Yes, they are needed. Are they effective? I can't say 100% they are, but I've heard examples where, um, in one particular case where a student came, entered the school and went around the detector. Okay. So that, that's very concerning. And there was, you know, um, staff member in the hallway who kind of ignored that him coming in, into the school that way. Now, finally, in fact, finally, in terms of being effective, you know, there's a lot of door, door entrances to a school, into a building. Um, so to me, that metal detector is the only one point of entry of safety. Those other doors into that schoolhouse is a concern for me. So that is my, that's my answer.
Okay. Uh, Tiffany, same question about weapons detectors in schools.
Yes, um, I don't have any issues with having, um, detect weapons detectors in schools. Um, and today, you know, you have weapon, uh, weapons detectors when you go to the grocery store. You have it going through the airport, um, going to school. If that means that we're going to keep our students safe or even the perception of being safe, you know, whatever, um, it takes, that is absolutely fine with me. However, what my concern is, is definitely have we, you know, what does it look like in terms of, you know, once they've been in place for, I don't know if they've been in place for a year now or not, but just looking at the data to see if there was a decrease in, um, the number of weapons that were found. Um, also just making sure that we eventually get to the root um, cause of the problems and why students are bringing weapons to school, um, in the first place. Um, although, you know, we don't want guns on our campus. Um, I've heard of events that happen outside of the campus on grand school grounds in the parking lot. Um, and also, you know, students are still bullying, they're still fighting and there's still violence within the schools, even, you know, although we have our metal detectors. And so we have to look at, be more proactive in what we're doing and making sure that our students are safe, um, in schools, period. And getting, getting to the root of the problem in terms of what's going on and why there is, um, physical violence in schools.
Thank you. And that is.
Dan, uh, can I, I just want to share something that, that we're on the topic of weapons. Um, so during the, the, the Lithonia Chamber meeting yesterday with superintendent, he gave some good news. He shared with us that this school year, they've, they've only, um, found three guns. So the number has gone down. So that was good news. I just wanted to share that piece there.
Uh, that does sound like good news. I, I hope it will be zero at some point.
Yes, at some point, but we'll take it.
Yeah, that would be good. Uh, so we're, that is our, uh, end of our forum. We're going to go into closing statements. Uh, Tiffany, we're going to start with you. You have two minutes to make a closing statement and then we'll let Donna make her closing statement.
Okay, so I just want to first of all, just thank, um, thank, thank you again, Dan and Decaturish for having this forum for us. Um, I, I really appreciate it and I hopefully everyone um, learned a little bit more about me and my thinking in terms of schooling. Know that I am a lifelong educator. I have always had the best interest of students at heart, um, putting students first. And those who directly impact student learning, um, I make sure, uh, I want to make sure that they have, um, are mentally and physically well. And so, um, I would just love for everybody to, um, join me in, in my fight for District Five. Uh, remember top five for District Five, students, teachers, literacy, safety and accountability. I can be reached, you can email me, um, at TateHoganForDeKalbSchools@gmail.com. My website is the same, except it's just dot com. So thank you so much, um, and I hope you, um, go out and vote.
Thank you. Uh, Donna, two minutes to make your closing statement.
Yes, I want to thank you, Dan, and the Decaturish team for having this for, uh, forum this evening. Um, I, my, my theme for my, um, campaign is building sustainable schools, students matter. Uh, my platform is, uh, bolstering literacy, uh, student and, uh, teacher staff, um, mental health, wellness, um, travel exploration is a big one for me. Emerging technologies is another one. Financial health for the school district is another one. Um, as we move forward, let us remember the importance of unity, collaboration and a shared vision for a brighter future. Together we can address disparities, empower individuals and create opportunities for success for all members of our school community. I'm committed to continuing my work in education and community engagement, and I invite each of you to join me in the, in this endeavor. Let us work hand in hand to build a stronger, more inclusive community where we, where every individual has the opportunity to thrive. That is the opportu, opportune word. Thank you again, once again, for your support. I look forward for our continued collaboration. I look forward for our continued collaboration for betterment of our community. You can reach me at D Priest Brown, uh, D Priest Brown, the number four B O E dot com. Again, D Priest Brown, the number four B O E dot com. And I hope you would support my campaign and don't forget to vote on May twenty-first and don't forget early voting. On April twenty-ninth through May seventeenth. Thank you again.
Hey, that's my line. I, I was, I tell people to early, but seriously, thank you for reminding people. The, and it's worth saying again, May twenty-first is the primary, although the school board elections are not partisan. Fun fact, uh, so no matter what ballot you pull, it will be on your ballot. Uh, and early voting starts April twenty-ninth. You can find all of the election information at Decaturishvotes.com. This has been the District Five DeKalb County Board of Education Debate. We have enjoyed our time with the candidates. Education is so important in DeKalb County and it's so important that good people step up to run. So we appreciate your time and your interest in public service. Our next forum is gonna be the District One DeKalb County Board of Education Forum slash Debate. It will be streamed on Twitch and Facebook on April twenty-fourth at seven PM. So check it out there and we're gonna upload it to the Decaturish YouTube channel later. Uh, again, if you support, if you appreciate what we do, please visit supportyourlocalednews.com. Become a paying subscriber to help us keep doing this, keep doing what we're doing, keep bringing you the information you need to make an informed decision on May twenty-first. With that, we wish everyone a good evening and we're gonna see all of you next week. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Bye.
Good night.